Sorry, I can support you.
Jim, we'll talk about that later. Okay, public hearing, peddler's permits. Do you need a motion to open a public hearing on that?
I'll make a motion. We open a public hearing.
Second it?
I'll second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Okay, anybody got any comments on the public hearing for peddlers? Okay, approval of benefits. For five fifteen twenty-four regular board meeting.
Some of them. I'll second it.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Approval vouchers.
We've got two different ones, because one is the end of the year, one is the start of the new fiscal year. Finished, I'll finish last year. General fund of hundred and one thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars thirty-four cents. Water fund eighteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars ninety-one cents. Sewer fund nine thousand eight hundred ninety-eight dollars forty-two cents. And capital fund one thousand six hundred fifty-eight dollars fifty cents. That's to finish the year. To start the new fiscal year, we've got a general fund of a hundred and nine thousand four hundred and nine dollars twelve cents. Water fund of sixty-five thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars seventy-two cents. Sewer fund eleven thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars thirty-two cents. And capital fund seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and eight dollars fifty cents. Tim and I finished auditing these just about an hour, hour and a half ago. So they're all audited, and I make a motion that we pay.
I'll second it. Call in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Unfinished business, groundwater well development project, phase one. Happy to report that that is complete. Aqualoxics finished up their stuff last week. That project is done. So we can take that off our agenda. Groundwater well development project, phase two. We do have a resolution we need to do on that, move some money around. Basically, well drilling is done on the test wells, they're just doing more sampling. Jay Billings is getting everything together, and when they get some ideas, they'll be back in touch with Paul and I, and the engineers. Then we'll bring it back to the board and see where they want to go. In order to develop those wells, we'll have to go out and go after some more grants. Do you have anything on different, Paul?
That's it.
What is that resolution? Basically, the resolution is basically an authorization for expenditure of capital reserve fund from the village of Lawwell, water reserve capital fund. Whereas at regular meeting, affiliate to board of villages in Lewis County in New York on the eighteenth day of June twenty twenty-four at four ten P M, and whereas the meeting was called to order by Mayor Beagle, Fonroll call, President Choate Beagle, Dan Solomon absent. But the village, the village board of the village of Lawwell previously established a resolution, a water reserve capital fund according to the section C of the general municipal law. Whereas the village board wishes to use a portion of that fund to pay for various costs, expense related to test wells as part of a possible phase two for the village groundwater project not to exceed sixty-eight thousand four hundred. Now therefore be resolved that by the village board of the village of Lawwell, that a sum not to exceed sixty shall be expended from the water reserve capital fund for services and expenses associated with selecting sites and boring test wells and related activity, and it's further resolved that this resolution shall be subject to progressive referendum in accordance with article six C of the general municipal law. So we just need a board member to authorize us to move forward with that.
I'll make a motion. We accept this resolution?
I'll second it. I'll second. Okay, now we got a vote on. Myself, yes. Dan?
Yes.
Charlie Trilliam?
Yes.
Tim Wenderick?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
And that's basically it. Groundwater phase two project at this moment. Street lighting L E D conversions, still waiting for a final payoff on that. I talked with Terry Tess, Martin Burke, Hussein Bo, he's still waiting. The only information we have, if we do want to finance it, they're putting a package together. They're going to be sending a the Brett name, that'll give us terms and interest rates if we don't decide to pay for it upfront. So that's still ongoing. Okay, zoning changes, do you have anything on that yet, Tim?
Yeah, I mean, another meeting with Matt and Chris from the tug of commission in that Louis County. We basically went through the whole plan again and changed quite a few things as far as what requires special permit, what requires set plan review. So we put an awful load on Matt as far as reviewing it, and that was last Tuesday, and I haven't heard any success, so I haven't had a final report on it.
Okay, Veterans Park, couple things on that. First one is resolution twenty twenty-four dash eleven. Basically, this is a resolution to authorize expenditure of capital reserve fund from village of Lawwell storm drainings reserve fund to go towards paying for the drainings that we got to do up there in the park. Basically, it's pretty much the same as the last one. It says, whereas the village board of the village of Lawwell previously established a resolution storm drain reserve fund in accordance with section C six C of the general municipal law, and whereas the village board wishes to use a portion of fifty thousand of that fund to pay towards various costs, expense related to storm water management, infrastructure improvements at Veterans Memorial Park. Now therefore be resolved that by the village board of village of Lawwell, that a sum not to exceed fifty thousand shall be expended from the storm drainings reserve fund for service and expenses with the design bidding, construction phases, and related activities related to Veterans Memorial Park project, and that is therefore resolved that this resolution shall be subject to permissive referendum in accordance with article six of the general municipal law. Basically, once we do have a grant, that we will be getting down the road. And but we do have bills that we have to pay on that upfront with our engineering and everything that's going on. So we most likely when everything is done, should be able to put that fifty thousand back once we get the grant.
That's my question.
Do we need a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
This is just for the stormwater part, right?
Just for the stormwater.
This is for the five hundred thousand dollar credit that we got.
I mean, this this resolution just for the drainage and the stormwater.
And so we can pay Bernie and Karen for the work that they've done on the stormwater and the design up there.
So moved?
I'll second it.
Okay, myself, yes. Dan?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Okay. Did you want to comment any on the other resolution that's coming down the road for the Veterans Park, or that's still going?
I talked to Bob Moens a few minutes ago, and hopefully tomorrow, the town board will create a resolution that will allow us to move forward because they're on a deed with us, or were, and which point we'll be able to to do that because the D R I committee is hot on that one day long, and I think a little later on, Tim attended, I couldn't attend the meeting yesterday, Tim attended the meeting. And at the appropriate time, we'd like to discuss a few other things about the D R I if we can there. Thank you.
Basically, what this is all about is in the deed, there's a restriction, and that restriction was put in there years ago by both the town and the village board, which says no buildings except for the bandstand can be on that property. And with the D R I and the other projects, part of the project we want to do up there, we'd like to put proper restrooms in there, which is going to mean we got to put a building on the property to put proper restrooms in there. And in order to put that building on, we got to remove that restriction off the deed, and according to we researched it a few years ago, too, and where the town and village board put that restriction on, with this resolution, the town and village board can take that restriction back off. So that's what's that's what's going on there, just so we can put a building there to put the restrooms in.
Mayor, I think you're referring to correspondence we received from attorney Jeebo in two thousand eight kind of explaining that? That that's what we needed to do, and I think Jim concurred on that.
Any comments on that?
Nope, that definitely has been covered well.
Anybody else have anything on Veterans Park? Okay, I'm going to kind of pass the board meeting up here a little bit because I'd like to call an executive session right now because I need to talk to another attorney and get him on the phone, but I can only reach in between four and five. And that reason for executive session is going to be two things. One is litigation, and the second would be contract.
Mayor, should I redo that? When I talked to you about, Jim, about possible purchase of property by the village? In the same executive session?
That's a proper subject for executive session.
So we'll all?
I've had a couple of
Might as well.
So can I have a motion for executive session, please?
I'll make a motion. We go and do the executive session. I'll second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Hopefully, it won't be long. Summer recreation, basically, I don't want to hold off on that one because we will be going back into another executive session. About that contract, yeah. We didn't want to hold these people up any longer than we had to. Downtown re-regulation, any comments on that, Paul, ahead?
Tim?
Yeah, I can comment. I mean, there's been two local planning committee meetings, I've attended both, and there's been three court team meetings, Dan?
Yes, and I've attended two of the three.
He's attended two, and I've attended two. The court team meets every two weeks, every Monday, every two weeks in session. And the local planning committee, which is what you'll see in the L P C, if you see that, that's local planning committee, meets once a month. There's been two of them, there'll be four more of them, there's six total. Where we're at right now is we're reviewing municipal projects only, and we're trying to get to the end of that. The call for open projects started Monday, the seventeenth, yesterday, and that'll go through July first.
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first, yes, thirty-first, month and a half, basically. So any private projects or other public projects can be submitted at that time. Right now, we're in the planning stages of confirming what projects the village actually wants to go forward with. So that's where we're at.
And
And then all that's on the website.
Yep, they want, they requested that Paul be there to be able to answer questions that he may only have the answers to, like the ones you just added.
Maybe another meeting the end of this week, actually, so I'll let you know. So d r i lawwell dot org, right? D R I lawwell dot org.
And there's also, you can go to the village of Lawwell site, and there's
There's a link there, project can be submitted online on an online application, or you can print it out, or take it to Nat for Lewis, or go right to Nat for Lewis and fill out the application.
They they wanted to, as I discussed with the mayor, we have got an engineer that's developing plans. They're willing to, as part of their procedure, they're willing to do landscaping for us for no cost, and they're even willing to give us some of their ideas for engineering if if we want. And I don't see why we wouldn't. I think if they're willing to do it for free, what the heck, two eyes are better than one.
Well, it's part of their fee that they're
That they've already, they're getting, they're getting X amount of dollars, yes.
So that's where that's at. And there'll be a bunch of public outreaches, different things going on through through the next month and a half. I think you mentioned summer rep contract, too, man.
Don, want to take that in the executive session?
Oh, okay. I didn't hear that.
Okay. Lewis County Hockey Association, not really a contract, it's just more of a memoranding of understanding. Basically, the town's doing the exact same thing. Basically, what this is, it's an agreement between the village of Lawwell and the Lewis County Amateur Hockey Association. As you all know, they needed a new chiller over there on the fairgrounds for the winter skating season for our free skate and everything. So the county who's is planning on using thirty thousand of their A R P money to put towards the chiller. And the village agreed, we did a motion a few, a couple months back, to put thirty thousand in also towards the chiller.
The township, not the county. Was it the township, not the county, with the A R P money?
It's the township.
Because the A R P money is from the town, I don't believe it's from the county.
No, it's from the town.
Oh, you're saying county?
Did I say county? No, it's from the town. But in order to protect the villages and the towns' interests on this, that's why we have this agreement. Let's say the hockey association was to go no longer be available, say, five years from now, then the town and the village has claim on that chiller, or the hockey association needs to pay us back appropriated sum. So that's, I just need the permission to sign this, basically memoranding of understanding.
I'll make a motion. We sign that? I'll second.
Call in favor? Oppose? Does anybody have any comments on the peddler's permit, local law?
Nope.
Do we need a motion to close that public hearing?
I'll make a motion. We close that public hearing.
Okay.
I'll second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Basically, what this is, and we got a resolution on it also. Basically, the village of Lawwell enacted a local law to repeal and replace chapter one thirty-seven dash seven of the village code relating to peddling and soliciting investigation and issuance. Whereas the village board of the village of Lawwell New York has devoted considerable time and attention reviewing the current village codes. Whereas the village board has determined that chapter one thirty-seven seven needs to be repealed and replaced. Whereas present to New York Environmental Quality Review Act, proposed legislation is not considered an action nor seek or review is needed. Now therefore be resolved by the village board of the village of Lawwell New York, the foregoing recitations incorporated here and made in partnership set forth herein. The village board hereby enacts local law to repeal and replace chapter one thirty-seven dash seven of the village code retaining the peddling and soliciting investigation and issuance to ensure the police chief or his designated address such matters as being in the best interest of the village of Lawwell. The mayor and village clerk for the village of Lawwell, the respective agency employees are authorized to sign all documents and make any step necessary to enact this legislation. Basically, what it comes down to is before the clerks handle the approvals. Everything's going to go through the police department now. They have to do background and checks. The only thing the clerks will hand over would be the permit fees. Basically, with everything that's going on nowadays, the clerks, they can't investigate somebody wanting to get a permit, or the police chief can't. And that's also part of it here, it says, a local law to repeal or replace chapter one thirty-seven dash seven of the village code being enacted by the board of trustees, the village of Lawwell follows. Repeal and its entirely chapter one thirty-seven dash seven, the village code, and replace with the following. Chapter one thirty-seven, peddling and soliciting, one thirty-seven dash seven, investigation and insurance. The police chief or his designated shall investigate all applications and shall therefore, with a due dispatch, issue or deny such license to the applicant. All licenses shall expire on the first day of June following their issuance, but such licenses may provide for an earlier expiration date. If after investigation of any application, the police chief or his designated should deny the same, he shall endorse on such application such disapproval and the reason for saying. And the police chief or his designated shall forthwith notify the applicant in writing for such denial of his right to appeal as set herein herein. So we need a motion to adopt the new local law.
I'll make a motion. We adopt that new local law.
Second?
I'll second.
Call in favor? Oppose? And we also need a motion for the resolution on that.
I'll make a motion on the resolution.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? New business, craft surcharges. Looks like this was all water, right? Or not water, I mean all sewer. Part of the craft surcharges is all sewer.
Yes.
Okay, March twenty twenty-four, nineteen thousand five hundred dollars. April twenty twenty-four, seven hundred and fifty dollars. May twenty twenty-four, none. We need a motion for charge craft surcharges. Some of them, Mayor?
I'll second it.
Call in favor? Oppose? Okay, budget amendments, water. Need approval on that?
I'll make a motion. We approve that amendment. I'll second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. There's been some changes at Kendall, Harrington, and Burrows. It's now going to be identified as Kendall, Harrington, and Burrows. Kathleen Harringer is going to be provide the new general legal services to municipalities. So basically, we need to do a new resolution for their services. Basically, except for the name change, everything else, the fees and things are the same.
I make a motion.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Dan, you, Dan?
Yes.
Yeah, Dan.
Myself, yes. Tony?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Tim?
Yeah.
Okay, we got the fair coming up next month before our meeting, so we have a resolution for the village of Lawwell, resolution for the fair parade detour.
I'll make a motion. We accept that.
Second?
I'll second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Parking, every year, the village of Lawwell, basically, the village of Lawwell Board of Trustees has removed the one and two-hour parking restrictions after two P M on Tuesday, July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, for the Lewis County Fair Parade. Vehicles parked before two P M in these restricted spaces will be ticketed over the designated time limit. Parade spectators are also reminded that lawn chairs, tables cannot be used on village streets to reserve parking space during the day. These items will be removed by the village personnel. And we need a motion for that one also.
Some of them. I'll second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, correspondence. Got the information from Rachel, all their updates. Their trainings. Anybody have any?
Well, neither one of us made the meeting, right, Tom?
No, sorry, I was about to tell.
So the information we got in front of us is what happened again. I know they talked about forming an executive board. So therefore, they could make most of the decisions because they were sometimes having trouble getting a quorum, but that did not pass, so at least right now it didn't. That's all I know about the meeting.
Okay, then there's an email from Manuel or R D Gonzalez regarding the cream cheese festival. I just thought everybody would look. For the board out here, I'll read it. Basically, it says, good morning. My wife and I travel to Lake Spade frequently. Recently, we heard on the news that an idea was floated about moving the cream cheese festival to the fairgrounds. Please pass on to the town leaders instead of village board, that we think this is a bad idea. First, we found the cream cheese festival the second year because of traffic in town. We stopped. We had a piece of the world record-setting cheesecake in the firehouse. Now that's local and fun. Moving to the fairground removes the lawwell importance of the cream cheese festival. Having the five-year-old, juicy wheelbarrow to have button clothes too big is fun for the locals and great for all of us to stop and visit. Cream cheese festival doesn't have to be the world's biggest, but should strive to continue to be the best local event. That is what it is now. Thank you for your time. Looking forward to September. Respect to the village Manuel and R D Gonzalez, and they're from Hudson Valley, New York. But they want to see the cream cheese festival. Officer Committee reports. Anything new? Have anything different with this mall? Court Treasurer, do you have anything? Police chief, I know you had a busy day, but
Yeah.
What was going on?
Uh, well, we had another trestle incident. Where an eleven-year-old having a mental health crisis was plucked off there before he hurt himself. So I did make contact with someone from D O T, a personal friend of mine that is going to work with a resident engineer, Steve Ragnar, the newer guy, and see if we can do something with the trestle.
That wasn't even what I knew about.
That wasn't even what I knew about. I was off to get to school.
Oh, that was just a, they were at Parkville. We just helped the traffic. So anyway, I'm going to talk with Steve Ragnar and see if we can maybe hopefully do something with the end of the trestle. Anything right now, we've been on top of that trestle way too many times in the past year. We've been up there three times. So, um, uh, June fifth, we were visited by a first amendment auditor here at the village and town offices. He didn't come to the police department. I don't know why, but we were there. Um, so I did sign everyone up at our office for free webinar training in July, just to learn how to deal with, if they do show up. Miranda Burgoyne's the new officer. She's in week five. She's doing well. She just called and I couldn't answer it, but, um, so she's, she's doing good. She won't be out till the first of November. Um, Shane Glado, the other new officer, his last day is Fri- this coming Friday, so Monday, he starts field training with Sergeant Martin. So, he will be ready for solo duty the end of fair week. So that will put us nearly twenty-four seven. We'll be very, very close to doing twenty-four seven again, once we get him back on the schedule. We have some great part-time people that are filling in the dealership, so. Uh, we did yesterday, put in for bulletproof vest grant for three new vests. We have to buy them anyway. Uh, two were for the two new officers and one is for Officer Maroff, whose vest is way past its shelf life. They're supposed to be five years and rotated, um, destroyed, and Jeff says over ten years, so that's twenty-eight hundred dollar grant. Um, so hopefully, they're going to be here in time. The grant, I won't know until then July, I think they said. Um, and the last thing I have is I passed out and talked to most of you at some point about, um, another grango. They have incentive right now that Ryan called us from Empire. Uh, there's for a twenty twenty-five, exactly what we just ordered. Um, is four thousand dollars off what we paid for this one, so it'd be forty, forty-four.
Four nine seven eight.
Forty-four nine, so that's a twenty-five. If we order soon, we can have it November first, right around that area. We're going to leave it unmarked. It's going to be special operation kind of vehicle. Um, and then when, in November, when Miranda's done with her schooling, we'll have the fusion back, and I'd like to put that out for auction. Um, so two thousand fifteen to forty thousand miles. I would like to think we could probably get around ten for that and then replenish some of the funds. We, I, we have that in the budget already, um, in the police department budget. We have enough to cover the new grango, so I'm basically looking for approval to get that. The last car that we did buy prior to this was a twenty, and that's got forty-some thousand miles on it, and the running boards just rotted off it already. But at least something, we had to put new ones because they were unsafe, so they were going to break in half. So in four years, a village car was assault and, and, I mean, we do have a car wash app that's been helping. The guys wash the cars a lot now. But they just don't last. They don't have a lot of miles on them, but they just hold up.
Because in a budget, I'll make a motion to do it. No, second. I can get a copy of that.
I'm sorry.
So this is just a basic vehicle, you know?
Uh, it's a police package. Police package. Uh, it'll have a console on it. Um, we're not going to put a radio on it because they're sixty-five hundred bucks. So the handhelds work fine. Uh, we're going to put, uh, lights and sirens in it. We have all that stuff. We have excess stuff for the garage from other cars that we've stripped, so. And I know John will help us do that with DPW, so basically, this is pretty much the only expense we're going to have. I want to put a computer in so we can, we can see complaints, write tickets, stuff out of it, and, but we handle all that, like I said, so. This should pretty much be the only expense we have, so. So it'll basically be another patrol car that I'm going to use and then like the other guys are going to use it for instead of the other operations that we have when we can. Take your mark hard, too.
So you're looking for the board to give you permission?
I believe Jeff made a motion.
You made a motion? Only thing I would do on that motion, I think we should get together with Brittany and take another look at what we got in reserves for police pay. I think the motion should be.
It's already there. It's.
On contingent on that, to make sure.
The funds being budgeted.
Twenty-five, uh, we're putting twenty-five thousand dollars into police reserves, and there's already a pretty good bond of, I can't remember off the top of my head, I know I just spoke too about it, probably about sixty or so that's sitting there now. So which way the twenty-five we're putting in, we can take that back out with another fifteen and be good. And then anything that we get from the sale of the car, we can replenish into reserves.
Put back in, yeah.
Yep.
So I just want to make sure that it's definitely budgeted.
Yes, I, I talked to Brittany about it yesterday.
So you made the motion?
I second.
Home favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll abstain.
No, I know why. That's it?
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, I have a few things, uh, just to let public be aware that we have been painting curbs. Here soon, we will be doing crosswalks. Kind of like to wait till school gets out. The other, the other thing I wanted to bring up is, as I talked to Nick in Lincoln, Lewis County, he put out a bulletin about the school plan. So last year, in the beginning of this year, we had it open twenty-four seven, seven days a week. But we are getting the influx of people from out of town bringing brush in, uh, not, not only brush, but trees, everything else. We were, Joe and I were talking about it the other day. We roughly spend fifteen to twenty thousand dollars a year to chip the material that comes in. That doesn't include the man-hours and machinery that we take it to move it out back. So we figure we're spending somewhere around fifty thousand dollars a year. And a percentage of that is a lot of material coming from out of town. We do have signs down there that says local residents only, but, uh, you know, it's, it's so hard to monitor it, so that's why we've done that. Uh, I brought up to Joe a suggestion on a weekend, we do one, have it open one month or one, one Saturday a month, say from eight in the morning to twelve, which we would have to pay one of our DPW guys to be down there just to monitor. I mean, me personally, I don't think we can leave it open overnight. There's a lot of people, and I've seen it. They come in when it's dark because they know that, you know, nobody's going to see them. Uh, we can put cameras up there. There used to be cameras, but you're going to spend two, three, four hours going through, going through it, trying to find it, and then, then you got to get with Darryl and, you know.
Local.
Yeah.
Well, the other thing too is, uh, it's also a liability issue, only because with our new lagoon. A few months ago, we had a couple down there. I forget, I think it was a Saturday or Sunday afternoon. They thought it was a walking trail, and they're out there walking around the goons. And the thing is, the new lagoons, especially with that new liner, if anybody fell in there, they'd never get out.
So.
I agree. It doesn't, it doesn't need, you certainly can't leave it open overnight and more than maybe four hours on a Saturday afternoon, I think is more than enough if they can't get.
I mean, it's, it's bad for the village residents, you know? Most people work all day long, but they can't take it down there, but I think if we give them a Saturday, and this is a Saturday that's going to be open.
But you still pick up yard debris.
We still pick up yard debris every other day, every third day. So, I mean, there's a lot of people out there that don't like to put their debris out front because, A, it kills the grass, and if you get a windstorm, it blows to your neighbors, but we're pretty much.
Is there, is there a way, and I know I'm putting it on your plate, is there a way that you could schedule it? Like, you're going to do Waters Terrace the third Tuesday of whatever?
No, because it's, it's, it's fair. Some days it's over here, some days it's there.
Okay.
I just know way you can do it.
Yeah, okay.
I, my, my concern.
I think the guys keep it cleaned up. I've seen streets, I've seen it out there today, and within two days, it's gone.
My concern is, well, we close it every day at three thirty. I'm, I'm not opposed to closing it overnight. I'm not opposed to closing it at three thirty. If we could have one day during the week where people could go there in the evening and drop stuff off. If we're spending all that money chipping it, it's probably because we're getting a lot of illegal stuff that we wouldn't get if we had somebody down there. And my thought is even, even at night, if it's still daylight, if we just had somebody go in and lock it up at, let's say, six o'clock, seven o'clock, three o'clock that night, a night a week.
I hate to say this, Dan, but New York State put the kibosh to a lot of the stuff down there because we never had a problem when we used to have other people bringing their stuff in there and it got chipped up and things. Because many years ago, Lyonsdale, when they had their chip plant up there, they loved that stuff. They took it for free. They come and they chipped it all the way. Then we started sending it to Fort Drum, and they went and shot Fort Drum down now. So basically, we don't have a, we got piles and piles of chips down there right now, and nobody wants them.
So, so my question here is, are we still going to suck chips from the village residents or not?
From the village residents, yes.
So, so I, if, if we're trying to stop the others and we're monitoring it, I, I think we're talking apples and oranges there.
Thing is, the village residents' taxes are paying for that. Outside people are.
What I'm saying is, we're not going to allow outside people anymore.
We don't allow them now.
Right, so, so, well, if we catch them, we stop them. I mean, during the day, if you're seeing somebody there and you know they're not from the village, we need to be chasing them, period. I mean, DPW guys should just be chasing them.
Right.
We can, I, you know, I'm not going to debate the issue because I know how, I know how the public's going to handle this, and so I'll leave it at that.
Capital future planning.
No, no report? Nothing, thank you.
Personnel?
No.
Finance? Here's where I'm going to ask for another executive session because the contract I'm talking about is going to be financially expensive. Lazens, fire department?
Um, the fire department, unless I'm wrong, Joe, are we still looking into possibly doing, and I hate to say it, a fireman's field day or some kind of fundraiser event, maybe?
It's been brought up.
But past that, I think that's all that really was resolved or talked about in the meeting?
I think it's going to end up becoming a community day if it comes to. It's not going to be as.
Elaborate.
But I think we are going to still look into it and see, but I think if we do it, we're going to plan it out long enough that it can actually plan it well and stuff.
Nothing?
Yeah.
That would do it. Police department, anything? We covered it. What Darryl said, that's what we're going to. Planning board, zoning board?
Uh, nothing this month.
Unbelievable, Mark.
Not really much.
Can we start meeting again?
Town, they're going to meet Thursday. County, anything?
Uh, just the approval of the funding for the summer rec program.
Okay, recreation, I want to discuss that and along with the finance, an executive session. Rico, we went through that already. It brings us down to public count.
My name is Carol Harris. I live in Laual. And I was here in February this year talking about the hedges on the corner of Cascade and Stow Street. And when at that time, I said, I hopefully, the board will consider, hopefully, to take care of that situation before summer. Summer starts Thursday. So far, nothing. The only thing that the landowner's done is just cut underneath those hedges. And I've got the building code things about hedges and stuff. They're supposed to be two feet, not just cutting underneath. The total thing is supposed to be two feet away from, from there. Today, I almost got hit because I'm trying to see, to get on Stow Street from Cascade to make a left-hand turn. It is a safety issue, people. It is a big safety issue. It's been brought up and brought up. Now, another thing is, did anybody send that lady a letter about her hedges since the last time I was here? I made, I mean, I actually made a complaint verbally.
Yes.
When was it sent?
Ward Daily did.
When was it sent?
I don't have the date with me.
I'd like to know, or do I have to foil that?
I can get it for you.
Because it's just the idea. Time has elapsed, and also, if Ward Daily got in touch with her, she's only got so much time. And then after that, according to this, then the village comes in and takes care of it. So I just want to know, is the village concerned about the citizens here or not? I almost got hit, and then one of the board members almost got hit too. So apparently, you all are not listening to anybody, and if you're worried about safety, I don't think you are. So the thing is, if someone gets hit and serves it, someone's going to sue that person that owns that property, and they'll be coming on to the village because the village was aware of it and did not do nothing about it. So it's just the idea. If you have laws and you're supposed to enforce them, enforce them, or you're going to pick and choose who you want. I've lived in this village for over forty years, and this village has not gotten better. It's gotten worse. And it's just the idea. And then also, even for people with their grass, people are, are doing their grass out in a goddamn street. That's illegal. That's illegal because of the motorcyclists or the bicyclists that go into there, they're going to get hurt. What is the matter with you all on the board? Are you not thinking of the people here or people that are coming in to visit? You're not thinking safety, none of you. Because someone's going to get seriously hurt, and does the village want to get sued? I'm serious, and I've got a neighbor that's in violation again, and that'll be her third violation. I already talked to Coles, and I talked to one of the Coles guys up there, and they lied to us. That's another thing. I don't like to be lied to. So another thing is, for people that are violators, for the same violation, in my opinion, this is my opinion, that if you guys don't do your, the job, plus the Coles officers, the thing is, is that if you want to make money, so you get these people to clean up their yards, especially the grass, and not put grass out in the, in the streets, maybe you should find them. Third time, like they say, three strikes, you're out. Twenty-five dollars. The next time they do it, you turn, add on another five to that twenty-five, and so on and so on, and maybe they'll get the hint. Because this village is looking like a crackhead, pretty bad. Also, what about the bridge down over there on, uh, down the street from Stewart's? That bridge has got that Japanese, uh, stuff that there, and it's crowded. The village is supposed to take care of that. It's all overgrown, and it's not cut. Plus, uh, the village has not done for, uh, coming up the street on Cascade Ave, onto Dan Street, that whole stretch on that hill where the doctor's offices are. If they can do the part that has the, um, the clock, it's not that far that they can go down at the same time and do that area down there. The grass is high, so when you're, have these laws, you're telling the people about their grass and stuff, and when you see the village doesn't do what they're supposed to, what is that saying? It's not fair. It's not fair. It's just going to be ridiculous in here. Also.
Can I say something?
Well, I hope it doesn't take from my five minutes.
I'll give you, I'll give you the minute I would take there. First off, I agree with Carolyn on one thing, and I disagree on another. It's time we do something about the shrubs. We've talked about it, we've talked about it. They're in defiance. As far as the village's looking like a crap hole, I'm sorry, I will disagree with you there. I think our village looks nicer than it's ever looked. But I do agree with you, and I, I, I've said all I'm going. It's time we take care of those shrubs. We're worried about safety everywhere else. Let's take care of those shrubs. Other than that, you've got another minute.
Okay. Then when it comes to, uh. Then when it comes to of, of village complaint forms, that, they need to be revised, and to be able to fill out and press, go online and press to send it to the village offices for complaints, we can't do that, the same thing with the county anyways, for the village codes, you have to print it out, you can't, you can't fill it out online, you have to either mail it or personally take it up there, this is not user-friendly, and it's also persuading people not to make complaints. And then also, in my opinion, maybe we should bring back code officer in the village like we had before, because the thing is, is that the code officers up in for the county, they're getting overwhelmed, and I think it's a lot better if we had a code officer in here, in the village like we had many years ago, I'm not the only one that feels that way, because when you call up there, a lot of times, the codes officers, they leave a message, they don't call you back. And the same thing here for the village board, if someone calls and leaves a message, nobody calls them back, there's very few of you that call back, and even though that person is complaining and stuff, they're a concerned citizen, just don't just put them on the back burner and say, oh, they're complaining again, they're concerned, that's not telling very much to the citizens, so it's just telling people that you don't care, but you want people to come forward, like when they see that and hear that, they're not gonna come forward, it's gonna hurt you all, and it's gonna hurt us.
I, I got a phone call from your husband's day at two fifteen, and I did not get a chance to return it.
No, that's okay, but I'm saying other board members, they have been approached, and they don't call back. So the thing is, is I, it's just the idea, we gotta get stuff done here, and it says, like if it weren't for the citizens here in the village who care about taking care of their lawns, homes, or sidewalks, this community would look like crap, to me and other citizens of this village would want to make the village of lava inviting, I hope you all will take note of what I said, thank you.
Any other public comment?
Hi there, I'm Ian Nortson, I live on Dewitt Street, and I'm here to ask you to take consideration during fair week, um, we live between Eugene and Stewart Street, and we have two-way traffic there, and in the past, we did have it a one-way street, which seemed to be a lot better with the entrance to the fairgrounds, or to maybe do no parking right through that area.
Is that something you'd look into, Joe?
What, what would you rather see, what would be better?
I think one-way worked very good for us.
I don't know why we ever got away from one-way.
Right, because with the big trucks delivering and stuff on the mornings, and then with all the traffic, it is very hard, and I get, you know, I can't even get on my driveway sometimes.
So there's one-side parking anyway?
Yes, yep.
So you're, you're with like the one-way coming from Boswick into the.
That's the way it used to be, and it worked very well.
We can do that.
Just for the fair week?
Just fair, yes, just fair week when it's very congested.
Are we going to, I talked to Jim about a public hearing, are we going to meet for the fair, because if we have a public hearing, we can't get hurt, uh, and we can pass at that length. Our meeting is scheduled for.
You mean a public hearing on what day?
I'm close making that one to a street that number.
I, I wasn't aware of this, if you have a public hearing scheduled, you were never gonna be penalized by having a public hearing, but, but you could potentially be penalized.
I guess what I'm saying is.
Do we need to have a public hearing in order to change that direction?
Where it's a village street, we can't change it on a, for a week?
Is it, is it a village-owned street?
Yes.
Well, if it's a village-owned street, you can change it without a public hearing.
We're gonna do it for the fair.
You, you've got this, or you can't.
I'll make the motion. Make it one-way for that week.
I'll second that motion.
Home favor?
Aye.
opposed?
She should come on, she does better than making one.
Yeah. Leave him home.
Thank you.
More questions than anything else, uh, the budget amendments for water, just kinda curious, what was the amendment for?
That was for the well. For the well drilling.
For the wells?
Yes, yep, for the test wells.
And the other question I had is, have you had any further contact with the group that wanted to do the refurbishing of the old AMF building, have they come back with any, think more on that?
Yes, they're gonna wanna do it.
They don't wanna do it, or do?
Well, the problem was, you, you were here when the gentleman was here.
Right, the money, right.
And he said that they had plenty of money, and they were gonna go ahead and do it, they just wanted to put in for the restore New York, and then he was surprised to find out that that was not in the DRI boundary, and he must've went back and talked to his partners or whatever, because then they come back and pulled out, because he said, if, if they couldn't be in the DRI boundary and get part of that ten million dollars and then get the restore New York, two million, they didn't wanna part of it. Basically, they wanted you and I and all the other taxpayers to pay the refurbishment, with our tax dollars, they didn't wanna put their money up front.
And the look on his face when he got the figure, what you quoted to him that it wasn't two million, uh, was enough to say that he was surprised.
But that's what happened there, I mean, there's still, I know Cassandra's still looking, I believe, they're still trying to find other grants that they might be able to use, so I mean, I'm not saying it's dead in the water, but as far as, right now, it's everything pretty much on hold, whether. Is that it?
Hey Joe, before we go into executive session, what, like, Bernie, our proposal for water park? Did we, did you get the board's approval to sign it? It's not on here, it was in the packet.
For the drainage?
Yeah.
Yeah, we. Drainage, yeah.
Yeah, we covered that. That was to move the money.
No, that was just to move the money, that wasn't to approve.
This is to approve their contract.
To approve first cars.
And this is just for the drainage, too?
That's just for that five hundred thousand dollar grant that we want. Did you, do you have any?
Yeah, we should, I didn't have it in my packet.
No, I didn't, I don't have the.
I'll get it back to you.
I have, it's just to move it to money, but.
Okay, basically what Paul's brought up here is, Brittany and I, the architect and engineers, basically their scope of services, they've broken down the tables, how much design phase, bidding phase, construction, residential project representative, C-COR, topographical survey, verification, agricultural, wetland, uh, SWPP, subsurface investigation, funding assistant, grant administration, construction stakeout, record drawings, reimbursement expenses, the total is a hundred and thirty-three thousand five to be billed as the work is being done. So Paul's looking for a motion for us to accept.
I'll make that motion. So this is for five hundred thousand dollar.
This is for the walkway.
But it's for that, to administer that grant, only that we got from.
Correct, from New York State Recs, partially.
Has nothing to do with anything else.
No.
I'll make that motion.
Give it back to Paul. Second?
I'll second.
Home favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, I'd like a motion to go into executive session to discuss contract issues.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Two seconds, Ken? Home favor?
Also about purchase of property, too.
Home favor?
Aye.
Opposed?